Started, thank you all for being here today in what I hope will be a historic city council meeting. At least I feel that way and I'm sure that the mayor and council feel that way as well. If I can ask you all to please rise, I'm going to ask Councilman Kevin Boone to give an invocation and we will also say the pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads. I do every father, Lord, we thank you so much for the many blessings you've given this town and this community, Lord. We thank you for all that you've done. Lead, guide, direct us, Lord, in all that we do and be with us, Lord, as we make these decisions to support this town in your will, Lord. Be with us as we go through this day and keep us all safe. In your blessed, holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, mayor, members of the public, what we're going to do is we are going to open up the floor to public comments. We had debated whether or not we were going to do that, but we're going to limit you strictly to three minutes. And if you would like to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Public comments will be followed by mayor has asked to speak and we'll allow the mayor to speak and then we will ask the council if they have any comments, followed by the one resolution that's on today's agenda. So I'll open the floor for comments.
Good afternoon, Bob Riggs, 114 Chestnut Ridge. First of all, I want to congratulate and commend the council for their leadership and good work in this endeavor. Good job done, gentlemen. Three quick points. Number one, we must buy this property now. As you know, the stars are aligned. We have an offer. We have examined that offer. It's a good offer. We don't know what the future's going to hold, next week, next month. We do know, for example, in November, we're going to have new members of the Baldwin County School Board. The stars are aligned today. We need to move forward and buy the property. Number two, the property has served the public for more than 90 years. The property should continue to serve our community. Number three, and my final point, I urge you all, once we acquire the property, to carefully examine the whole site and moving forward, how that property can best serve our citizens for the next 90 years. Whatever determination is made there, I want to again urge you very strongly to at least try to maintain and save the facade of the main school building there. It's, there's a lot of culture, there's a lot of history and interest attendant to that building and I would hope we would make every effort at least to maintain the facade going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to state your name and address?
Yes, sir, please.
Dean Mosier, 456 Oak Avenue. I agree entirely with Bob that the property needs to be owned by the city. I agree that it's the highest and best use should be that which is what considered. Most considered, I think we should have public debates and meetings about what are other possibilities besides what you all have proposed in many ways. I have worked for months to make sure that there was a counterproposal. I am not an agent of the city. In fact, the mayor asked me not to get involved in the K-1 Center from the beginning and I've told that to Jay and I've told that to Jimmy and that I've done this completely on my own, working with one of the most distinguished businessmen in the history of the state of Alabama, Mr. Mike Marone. Mike Marone founded Capstone and they have done $4.5 billion of development, capital and financing from Boston to Texas. He's a very distinguished man. He is now retired and he does projects that he wants to do and he likes Fairhope. His option is to buy this for Fairhope without costing the taxpayers a dime and then working out over the course of a year, the highest and best used for the property for the downtown merchants and all citizens of Fairhope, including having room, saving the facade potentially to use completely of the K-1 Center and also put in the other options that are already on the table that doesn't cost the city anything. There hasn't been any public debate on this. There has needed to be public debate on this and I would like to see a lot more public debate on what the options actually are for this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reg Patterson, 104 Oak Bend Court, Fairhope, Alabama. Just want to echo what these two gentlemen said. I don't want to be redundant. I am a developer. If I'd known this property was available, I'd have jumped all over it. It is a beautiful, beautiful piece of property and Fairhope is blessed to have this property at their disposal. The highest and best use, I'm not sure because I'm enjoying it come lately on this subject. But I know the gentleman that just spoke, I know his history and he's solid as a rock and I appreciate all his comments. I do think that the question of the facade probably needs to be resolved, well first purchasing needs to be resolved, then the facade. Sometimes it's hard to hold things. It's just hard to hold, but this has got a history, it's got value and all this. Where you can, you can. But once again, going through the best and best use of this property lends itself more towards people needing a place to stay and so forth like this within the city limits. And I just think that this property is, can be developed in an old timey type fashion, looking a lot like the Fairhope Inn across the street, something like that, keeping up with the facade that we have that we want in Fairhope, if you will. I've done these before, done them in South Carolina. I've built in 10 states and I understand Savannah, Charleston and all the older cities and it can be done. It can be done neatly and just look neat and maybe have a small task force, look at it, make recommendations and so forth. But I urge you to buy this property if you can buy it with, and incidentally, I know Capstone, I've worked with them. They are solid. Most of y'all know that. They primarily have built apartments and things within college towns and so forth. They're solid. They're good people and I just happen to know the owner. But I just want to encourage y'all to look deep into this. Let's get it, let's get it bought. And if Capstone wants to buy it, lease it back, pay us or something, I don't know. But financially, it looks like it's a win-win situation for Fairhope. Thank you for letting me speak.
Sir, thank you.
Tony Pritchett, 9 Viale Trentino. Thank you for the opportunity to address this meeting and I thank the council for all the hard work they've been doing to purchase the K-1 Center. I have, I'm a little confused because I hear Mr. Mosier say that the mayor asked him not to get involved with the K-1 Center and yet he then comes to the podium and tells us that he's been working for a long time to come up with a plan to develop it and he's found this Capstone organization, which I'm sure, you know, are a very honorable, honest company, but you know, I would want the council to realize that the reason Capstone are going to be wanting to be involved in it is not to help the city, but is actually to have some financial reward for it. And I, so I would then question, why wouldn't the city take hold of the property itself, have the meetings with the public to decide what is the best use, but why would we want to get involved with a independent contractor who's going to come and want to develop that site to their best benefit, not necessarily the best benefit of the city? That's my first concern. Then my second concern is we say that there have been no public meetings. Now, Mr. Mosier is a member of the public. He's not a developer, he has no interest, yet he's able to arrange a public meeting with the mayor to discuss this issue. I called the mayor's office, hearing of this meeting and asked to be included. I also have an interest in this development and I would like to be included into the meeting. On the Thursday before the meeting, I spoke to her secretary twice.
You have about 30 seconds, Mr. Pritchett.
Yeah, and put in the request. I called on the Friday morning in the city center, because I was being messed around with the phone system, to be told by the mayor's secretary that the meeting was canceled. I was then given the mayor's cellphone number to contact her. I called her three times and not once did she reply to me. Now, the mayor will know that I have always supported her in being on this side, so it's not a political issue, but I take offense that the mayor can arrange a public meeting or a meeting with someone from the public and then exclude the rest of the public and then say that there's no transparency with the council. I fully understand from my experience what the council have been up against trying to work with Mayor Wilson. Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
I'm going to respond to that. I was out sick last week. I did not attend any meetings and this was not a meeting that I organized at all. All I did, and I'm going to get to that in my mayor notes, is refer the people that needed to have the communication before an approval happened. I'm sorry that I returned your phone call, but I have been ill since Wednesday and just got back to work yesterday. So I don't know why Gail didn't tell you that, but that's the God's honest truth, so...
My name is Jim Kellin. I live at 3 Victorian Drive and I appreciate what everybody's saying about working together. That's all that I'm interested in doing and I think that this opportunity with a K-1 Center, which has been a center of learning in Fairhope for a long, long time, although last 10 years or so, it's not been as active with, it does have the Pelican's Nest, but potential there. So where I'm trying to go with this is that I think the partnership with the Baldwin County Board of Education won't go away if we utilize the facility for some of the things that we're imagining. I also think we can reach into the broader community for early childhood development, learning, best dollars, best energy you can put into learning is at that point because you get $7 back for every one you post on early learning and you get better graduation. It's an ideal thing. Along with that, the partnership with elementary and secondary levels of the Board of Education's programs here in our community, because I have been on the EAC for a number of years and just rolled out this past year. Faulkner, which is now, was Yancey before that, which is now Coastal Community College, but Auburn University has a research center here, University of South Alabama's engaged. What I want to see is a center for learning and innovations. I think we ought to work with commerce and business and promote development in the community. There are many sites where a boutique hotel could locate, but this site has a unique, special quality to it. I'd like to see a performing arts center that could also have world-class broadcast communication capacities. We've got a lot of creative artistic people here, so I imagine a center for learning, partner with all the education resources and innovations, which can help stimulate the good health and learning and education throughout a community, but especially successful commerce that produces wealth for greater development investment in the future. That's my imagination about our potential here and I'm thrilled that we have the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Eric Solerzana, 256 Liberty Street. In short, I think it should be an arts and crafts center slash visual arts center because, I mean, we got the film festival here in Fairhope, you know, we have to use Faulkner. I think that would be a great place for it. And as far as money, I'm kind of broke, I'm kind of poor, but I'll throw in some money for it, you know? It's that easy. It's a no-brainer. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
I'm Vicki Waterson Bailey and I'm not prepared to speak, but people are speaking close to my heart, so if I tear up, I'm sorry. I want to thank you all first for your efforts in trying to purchase the K-1 Center. I too have been working very diligently and very hard at the K-1 Center for many, many years. I was principal there for 14 years. Pat Carlton was there and did the same. You see several teachers here. I believe the best use for that school is for the children. I think that we can see a joint effort between South Alabama, maybe University of Alabama, maybe a performing arts center, maybe leasing parts to music and art, like Eric said, but please, please, think about our kids. You will get your return tenfold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Pat Carlton, 111 Cross Creek. I was, as Vicki mentioned, the last principal of the K-1 Center before it closed and I was in education for 36 years and I've seen in education that sometimes decisions are made unfortunately on money and not on what's best for children. And so I just hope that we will keep that in mind in the future and preserve and provide something for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Casey Hardman, the current director of the Pelican's Nest Science Lab, 4 Deche Court, Fairhope, Alabama. Wanted to speak on behalf of the endeavor for this campus, of what I've seen the past five years, but especially in the last 15 years of teaching on that campus, of what education can do for this, this community, this county, this state and our nation here on this campus in Fairhope. In the past, Charlene Dendo, the past director, won countless awards, environmental awards, education awards, just in that lab, for standing out in the nation for education of what's changing lives and connecting future citizens to ownership of these national standards. Currently, the Pelican's Nest is continuing to reach these national standards and stand out in the state. We have currently worked with educators, professors at South Alabama and Coastal Alabama recently and submitted current articles in national education journals that are breaking barriers in education to understand the importance of STEAM. When I speak of STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art and math, if you're not an educator, simply put, this is the gap that has been missing in education. This is what is going to bring our future children, future citizens into ownership of these standards. They are being forced into every single day, K-12, and it's going to give ownership to how they fit into this world in the future. Currently, to give you some heart to this endeavor, I want you to understand that every single day I see this community and this county come to that campus and I hear adults that are chaperoning the field experiences. I hear children having ownership, calling, get their bay, whether they live in Locksley or in Fairhope. But more importantly, I see support, asking what that school is going to become and excitement in their voices when they hear there's an opportunity for education and what it can do for, not just our community, for their community as well. Adults saying that they have money, just like he, our citizen said earlier, it might not be much, but they're willing to give it if it's for education. We're talking revenue. I see field trips come every single day of parents that are walking through the streets of downtown Fairhope, giving money to local retail spaces just to buy ice cream for students. But more importantly, I'll end with this. This past year, I could go on and on about stories that will make you understand how STEAM and outside opportunities in education connect students to this world. And most recently, if you're familiar with Altapoint, that is our county basically support for students that education sometimes deems unreachable.
I'll have to wrap it up soon.
Okay. Recently, Altapoint came in and because of liability, high school students had to chaperon the elementary. A student walked in totally shut down. By the end of that lesson, she was teaching the lesson. And if you walk into the lab, there's a sketch of myself teaching the little ones and she's the one that sketched it, therefore led the little bitty kids to understand how to diagram a fish. And her educator and her classmates walked out of there seeing hope. And that's what this campus means, is there's hope for education, hope for our future.
Thank you.
My name's Rebecca Dunn Bryant. I live on 519 Equality Avenue. Also didn't come prepared to speak and I'll be brief. I'm on the advisory board of FIF and have been working with them for several years on the vision for...
The safe lounge.
Okay.
You can talk more in the microphone.
Hi. My name's Rebecca Dunn Bryant. I'm on the advisory board of...
Rebecca talking to the mic there.
Of FIF. There we go. Looking at them doesn't make my voice louder. And I have been working with them for several years for the, on the idea of an educational enrichment center for the K-1 campus that will symbolically return education to the center of Fairhope and create a way for the community to engage in education. I just wanted to say briefly, we moved here almost 15 years ago, not because we wanted to live in a resort community or we wanted to live in Rosemary Beach or water, but because of the quality of life and the quality of education. And I fully support the council's efforts to, to purchase this property and to keep it as a civic center in the heart of Fairhope. And I am an architect. I'm not opposed to development, but as the central business district enlarges and becomes more dense, it's even more important that this is a shared community space, it's an expression of our community values. And while it's important that any proposals be financially sound, I think the, the return we're looking for is not just maximizing economic returns. We don't put flowers on our corners because there's an immediate economic return. It's an investment in our quality of life and this is the same idea. And we're so excited about the potential to build on the success of the, of the Pelican's Nest and really create a visionary center for the arts and learning. So thank you all for your hard work. Last little point. This is maybe the fourth public meeting that I've attended, I think, and I may have missed some, but so far I've witnessed a good public process and heard lots of different ideas and I haven't witnessed any, you know, secret process going on. I hope that this robust discussion continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Thomas Green, Club Drive. Just, I think we need to purchase the property. We see these large companies coming in like Walmart, buying the property. Do we want to sell Fairhope? No, we want to keep it, so let's buy it.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, city council, mayor. I'm Carlton Spinks, 361 North Summit and again, I apologize if I wasn't aware of this meeting. I usually dress a little differently, probably worse, but I do, I do want you guys to know how much we appreciate you and not from the point of discussion of the ultimate use of this property, but I'm confident in Fairhope and its citizens to come up with, with a wonderful use of this property. So I simply just want to encourage you guys to go ahead and make the, make the movement to buy the properties so that we can determine our own destiny with what assets we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cassandra Jones. My address is 211 Jeff Davis Street. I've heard all of my educator friends that are fabulous and I've heard all about the wonderful things that we're going to do with the K-1 Center. But I also want to speak to you about, my husband's mother went to that school. I went to that school and I was very blessed to work there for many years as a kindergarten teacher and it is part of our history and I just want to speak about our history. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie Reeves, 105 Ashley Drive, Fairhope. Was at my business downtown watching on Facebook and saw several people in the audience that I know and respect, as well as you guys up here. Jumped in a car and thought I'd get down here and just made it in the nick of time. Anyway, having a child who attended the K-1 Center, who is now a graduating senior, I can attest to the fact that that school's impact on our businesses downtown was monumental. Pat Carlton was our fabulous principal for two wonderful years there and I feel like he got so much more a sense of community. No offense to the elementary school now. Elementary school's a great facility, however, I feel like he got so much more of a sense of community. And, and you know, for those of you who are in the audience or watching on Facebook that have kids that attended there, that know of the field trips that they did downtown, and I'm not talking about field trips to Jeans Beans. They walked to the bay and did field trips through the Pelican's Nest and took seine nets and spread things out on the beach and figured out, you know, what they were. It was science, on-hand learning, you know, right there in front of your face, not from a book, not from anything, but from actual real-life experience. They did walking field trips to visit the businesses. They did field trips to the, to hear, to learn about city government, just so many trick-or-treat, Mardi Gras, all sorts of things where they saw the businesses welcome those children into our community. Children that probably didn't even know about downtown or the bay or things you could get out of the bay. You know, just things that you can't learn in a big building with, you know, 1,000, 2,000 kids. So I implore you to please, please, keep that as some type of educational institution. You know, I was on the Save the K-1 Committee for five years where we fought long and hard to keep that as a school and lost, lost our battle because of some fake, made-up budgetary numbers that were totally not factual, but regardless. Totally made, made up fake numbers. Anyway, I really do encourage you to keep, to explore the options of keeping that as some sort of environment for learning or schooling or, you know, science or arts, something to keep this community involved in that facility and to let kids understand. I think the kids are missing that feeling of community involvement that they got there. So please, help us bring that back to life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, my name is Amy Foley. I live at 301 South Drive. Full disclosure, I am FIF's, seems like perpetual president. This is my second term. I just want to echo what everyone said, appreciate everything y'all are doing. Please, please, preserve education in Fairhope. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. Is there anyone else?
I'm Evans Holcomb and I live at 19424 K. Furl Drive. I would like to say that we could be winners, everybody, two ways. Let's take the K-1 Center and do what we should do with it for the children and for the community and let's take the company that wants to buy or build a hotel and introduce them to some other property around here and let's be winners both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Okay, seeing none. Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation. Mayor, your comments, please.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank all of our employees for the last day and a half of hard work. This has been pretty much, we've been treating this as a hurricane drill, as if it was a Cat Five. They've done a wonderful job, and I feel like this was the perfect time to do it because true hurricane season really starts now. I have been a very strong proponent of the city owning the K-1 Center property, and, because I believe that the city needs to maintain control of such a significant asset in downtown Fair Hope. I think there's a lot of rumors that happen once you just try to make sure the public is involved and has input, because I can assure you that the manner in which this meeting took place, there was no public input that was wanted, and there was no public input that was wanted after the vote either, because that's what you told me. So, you know, this, what I'm satisfied with today is that everybody's here and they're speaking what they want, because that is how we will achieve the absolute best for the city. And I only want what is best for the city. And any rumors that you ever hear, I want you to call me to get the facts. My cellphone is 251-422-0669, when I'm not ill. And like I said, when we came back to work yesterday, it was all about Tropical Storm Gordon. And you can email me at karen.wilson@fairhopeal.gov. I always want to hear public input. I share my ideas with council. Any developer that comes to me, I refer to the planning commission, I mean, the planning department. And to tell you the truth, I hardly even see any developers anymore, because they know that. I don't want to have anything to do with anything except doing the right process, going through the right procedures. It's transparent, it's prudent, and that's the only thing I'm an advocate for. So, when things start twisting into something that they're not, and rumors start to happen, believe me, I can tell you the truth. Just call me. So, I am satisfied that by making the public aware of this meeting, that so many of you have come out, and it showing that it is important that you have a say after this purchase, because it is one of the most important assets, I think, our community has. And on another rumor about the triangle, again, all rumors, I'm going to post again the conceptual idea that our planning director put together that was put out as a public meeting. It was livestreamed, recorded, and available now for a botanical garden. And I also shared this with council. So, again, I just, it's politics, and believe me, I hate it. But no one wants, sincerely wants more for this community and for this particular asset than me. I went to school there, and my siblings. My dad went to high school there, and my kids went to school there. This is a block from a business that I agree with Stephanie. It was a thriving, when that K-1 Center shut down, it was almost like the economy shut down in downtown. So, as a businessperson and as a citizen, and as mayor, I think this is a wonderful opportunity to do everything we want to do, because all of these things are important to everybody. And I'd absolutely support FIF. I definitely support Hatch, because as an entrepreneur, this is an entrepreneurial kind of, you know, investment in our community. But I also support being able to have an economic impact that will not drain our coffers. So, I don't have a vote. All I've ever wanted was to be able to spread ideas and discuss, and when has that ever been a problem, or a point of, you know, being criticized to share an idea? We're Fair Hope. We can share our ideas, we shouldn't be criticized, and just respect everybody's opinion. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Council comments or questions?
Can I go first, if I'm first in line?
Yes, you may.
You know, I think this should be a very happy occasion, because I think what we're going to be able to do here, if things go how I expect them to go, I think that is a huge win for the city of Fair Hope and all of its citizens, young and old, to be able to have the opportunity to preserve what is considered to be a historic piece of this community, but also use it in a way to inspire and educate our rising generations. It's really, those kind of opportunities don't come around very often. And, you know, I keep hearing the phrase "best use" used, and Rebecca, you made a comment that stood out to me, you know, sometimes the most financially rewarding is not the same as best use. Our parks don't generate a lot of revenue for us in Fair Hope, but they're a staple of our community, and they're what really makes us what we are. Having an educational system like this in downtown, in whatever way it's used, makes us what we are as a community, and it has for years. And so, when I hear, you know, things put out that there was little public participation or no public participation in coming to this agreement, well, I got a couple of things to say about that. First is, there has been no plan established definitively for what this property will be used as. The proposal today is to purchase the property, next is to establish what that plan will be. I can tell you what my plan would be, and it's very similar to what I saw Councilman Conyers put out, is I envision this to be an educational center. We've had FIF come to the meetings and make a very public presentation on what they envisioned for their STEAM center. I thought that, it happened at a work session, so I know it was public, and I thought it was very well received by the council at that time. Since the K-1 Center closed, there has been momentum from this community to save it for some educationally-related purpose. And so, if that's not community involvement or public input, I guess I don't really know what is. And so, I think we're here today with the opportunity to do something great, and I don't want to muddy that up by name-calling or finger-pointing. I just want to say, I think this is a tremendous opportunity for us. I hope that we are able to secure it, you know, by the deal that's in front of us. And what shouldn't be lost in this, to those that don't know, this is not just about purchasing the K-1 Center. To those of you that don't know, the city does not own the NIC Center. The city does not own the park across the street from the K-1 Center. Those are owned by the Baldwin County Board of Education. And the deal that we have in front of us allows us to purchase all of the, all of that property, which again, is a huge win for the city to be able to control those assets that are so vital to our community. And so, with that, again, I appreciate everybody coming out today. You know, I hate dealing with speculation, rumors, and innuendo, but unfortunately, that's become an increasing part of what this job is. I should have known that when I signed up. Maybe I came in a little naive. But, but again, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I think it's a tremendous win for the city of Fair Hope, and I look forward to getting into it.
Very well said. Appreciate that.
That's why I like to go first.
Yeah, you kind of take all the good talking points. Really, to echo a lot of what Councilman Robinson said, I think we have an opportunity to really do something great, long-term impactful for the community. We've already got the Pelican's Nest on the site. We have an opportunity, we have a vision presented by FIF to transform at least those front four buildings into the beginning of a STEAM center. Hatch came about as somewhat of a vehicle to provide that Fair Hope entrepreneurial spirit, small-business incubator space for IT technology companies, but that is also the conduit for being able to provide for some of the cost-sharing in this project. Hatch is, I guess they're qualified to be able to apply for certain grants. This is something we would do in conjunction with Hatch through the city, and it would allow, allow them to have that grant shoulder a lot of the cost of acquiring the property and renovating the property, up to about eighty percent of it. So, to quote Bob Riggs, you know, the stars seem aligned right now. We've got, we've got the Pelican's Nest there, we've got an opportunity to let FIF develop the STEAM center, we have an opportunity to basically go from kindergarten up through high school into college, and even in the beginning stages of entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial opportunities, all on this one facility. You know, it may not generate the same kind of revenue that you would get through like a lodging tax, but it will generate some revenue, and it would be something very special to the city of Fair Hope. And I want to say, I think small businesses like Southern Light may have even started in a small-business incubator like this, and we've seen the success story that that is. I mean, we could have the next similar company starting here, and Fair Hope is such a home to entrepreneurs and home to such a unique educational environment. I just think that this is a no-brainer opportunity for us to acquire this. You know, my personal opinion, I would love to see a performing arts center also on this site one day, but I know there's a lot of things that need to happen up, up to that point. But right now, I think the main thing is we have an opportunity to buy it, and we have an opportunity to buy it at a low cost to the city because of a possible grant. So, that's my words.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Any side?
Thank you. Yeah, kind of echoing exactly what they've said. What this also does with the, you know, I think to me, what FIF presented for those four-corner buildings with the STEAM center really catapults this property into what it really could be for the, for downtown Fair Hope, and bringing back to its kind of glory days, if you will. And not only that, what this does, what this proposal between the school board and the city does, to me, is it rebuilds our relationship that the city has with the school board as we move forward here in the next few years with this county school system. We're going to need that relationship. That's it.
Councilman Boone, any comments?
Yeah, being the next-to-last guy, when this deal came about after, I'd say we've been looking at this a couple of years, as far as with the school board, talking to them back and forth. And as Bob said, when we've got a board that's kind of in line with what we think, I think it's going to work out very well for an educational purpose. You know, everybody knows I was, I went to that school also. I would like to say, I tried not to get my butt beat too many times there, but unfortunately, it did occur from time to time. But there are still a lot of pleasant memories there, and I concur with the fact that with everybody here, that this is probably one of the best buys the city will ever have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Kind of echoing what Councilman Robinson said, and you know, I also want to echo what Jim said, you know, when you don't get to go first, you don't get all the good talking points in. And so, I probably, I've probably drawn up what my vision was for the K-1 Center on a thousand napkins around town, sheets of paper, and, you know, I really need a good architect to do that for me, but Rebecca, but I've gotten by, I think, with squares on a sheet of paper. I want to, Mayor, because we allowed you to speak on this, I'm going to clear the air on some things, and this might muddy the water a little bit, but I'm going to do it anyway, so bear with me. You said it's not political, Mayor, but you sent a letter out over the weekend just bashing me concerning the special meeting, the timing of it, basically accused me of not being transparent. You also called the council out and said if the rest of the council truly want to be transparent, make proper decisions, they will cancel this meeting and make certain all facts are presented in a public forum before we move forward on expending millions of tax dollars. I find it very offensive. You told me that it was an inappropriate way, or you told the people that it was an inappropriate way to conduct business when so many stakeholders, which include every taxpayer citizen, are aware of the developments. Just the facts, for the record, on February the 15th, 2018, I was authorized by a council resolution to negotiate the purchase of the K-1 Center property. That was done out in the open in a public meeting. I've mentioned the progress to multiple times to numerous people over the following months, and that's no secret to anyone. On August the 23rd, a mayor and a staff member were briefed in the mayor's office by Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance Director Lee Lawson and myself concerning the terms of the purchase agreement and the economic development grant. On August the 27th, the council, as governing body of the city of Fair Hope, voted unanimously to authorize matching funds should be, should we be awarded an economic development grant as a $6.1 million grant we're applying for. Also, on August the 27th, the council comments of that meeting, if you'll go to that meeting and look at the video between 11 minutes and 30 seconds and 14 minutes, 30 seconds into it, I mentioned the letter of intent signed around August the 20th, so that was no surprise to anyone. I also stated that we were extremely close to an agreement, and that an agreement could be reached no later than two weeks and maybe sooner, which is exactly where we are today. Once again, fully stated, for the record, videoed for the whole world to see. Shortly after this meeting, I stated on local network news our intentions to purchase the property. I also stated the vision shared by the council, minute most of which you heard up here in the last few minutes. In this very same report, a potential competing group was interviewed stating their desire to do something with the property. Upon hearing about this, I chose to expedite the process to quiet any rumors about whom would own the property. It is also imperative to own this property to give credibility to the economic development grant application which has been submitted. I also repeated the council's intentions with a vision on public radio show on August the 30th. So, on August the 31st, I called a special meeting to hold the meeting four days in advance for the council to vote on the K-1 purchase. That would have been yesterday. This was capitalizing on a budget meeting already called by the mayor, i.e., all the council would already be in attendance, and I wanted to expedite the process. I originally wanted to hold the meeting immediately following the budget meeting, however, upon hearing from the city clerk on Friday afternoon that four more departments had been added to the budget discussions, I knew the budget meeting would become very long, didn't know when it would end, didn't want to rush that, so I chose to hold the meeting immediately prior to the budget meeting, because I knew once again that everybody would be in attendance. So, that was the reason, I thought it was fully transparent, and I just, I have a hard time understanding how somebody could say that that's not transparent. We are, truly, people came up here and spoke about the uses, best uses, and what their desires are, and I love hearing that, and you were all given the opportunity to do that. That was the plan all along. We'll have more input on that, but today was more about just purchasing the property, which was what I was authorized to do by this council, and that's exactly what we are here to do today. I do want to share my vision right now for the K-1 Center, and in the coming weeks, I'm going to ask the council to, in rough terms, adopt that vision with inputs of, from the public. I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of people in the public, and they're saying the same thing that ninety-eight percent of you are saying. And that is, first of all, if we receive this economic development grant related to the Hatch program, that center has to be used for Hatch. Now, what I envisioned was that would probably take up maybe the front hallway, and maybe portions of the, maybe the south corridor. I don't think it would take up all of the original K-1 Center. I would like to entice Coastal Alabama to move into the south wing, move out of the upstairs portion of our library, therefore freeing up the library for much-needed space for programs at the library. And I believe that we could potentially reach an agreement with Coastal Alabama to do that. This is already allowed, even if we receive the grant. I've talked to Lee Lawson, and he said this would be allowed, space being available. I would like to see the outbuildings used as FIF has proposed to the council for the STEAM center, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. All I have to do is pick up, one of the components of that was to have some, some green energy there, and all I have to do is pick up a phone and call the Alabama Municipal Electric Authority and have them place a 50-kilowatt... and have them place a 50-kilowatt solar farm on the northwest corner of that property. They've already surveyed it and said it would work there, thereby providing green energy, maybe not enough to run the whole center. And that is at no cost to the city whatsoever. Literally pick up the phone and tell them we're ready for it and they'll install it. For the old gymnasium and auditorium in the K-1 Center, I envision that being a performing arts center as Councilman Conyers mentioned. The Hatch grant, if we receive all of it, would be $6.1 million. That would cover the purchase of the land and also most, if not all, of the renovation to the existing K-1 Center less a performing arts center. And I would envision public and private funds raised to construct the performing arts center. I've pitched this to many, many people and many organizations and the feedback that I've received has been extremely positive. I agree wholeheartedly with "best uses" not always what makes the most money. I think that we're doing pretty good financially right now and what we need right now is quality of life and that's what that building built in 1925 provides to the citizens of Fair Hope if handled properly. So, with that, I'm going to close my comments. I'm going to ask the council, again, in the future to adopt this vision. Please provide your own inputs, get feedback from the citizens of Fair Hope. I'm going to also not belabor you with a list of questions that I had prepared for the mayor. I'm going to hand these to her at the conclusion of tonight's, or today's, meeting and also give this to the members of the press because I have a lot of questions, one of which was in the meeting in her office with Baldwin County Economic Development, there was an almost lobbying for a hotel in that meeting, them and a staff member. The mayor said that she, she didn't say, I don't remember if she said she's spoken to them, but that, she implied that she had knowledge of this person, that they were a fine person and they had a fine company and they would do a fine job and that we needed to find a place on this property for a hotel. There was also not lost on the council that a staff member mentioned a boutique hotel in the meeting that was held on, I said August 23rd, I think that was August 13th, there was a mention of a boutique hotel. You can go back and review the video for yourself. So, I'll hand out these questions just to find out if staffers are doing what is described in their job description or if they're going out, because we're being asked to fund a lot of positions and if we have people that are going out and I'd like to know if they're going out and marketing our land for private developers to purchase. I think it's important that we know what these people are doing since we're paying their salaries. And also, if private citizens are being asked to lobby on behalf of the citizens to market our properties, specifically the Triangle, the Civic Center, and potentially the K-1 Center of purchase. I think that we need to know the answers to that, council.
Look forward to answering those.
So, thank you for indulging me and muddying the water up a little bit. We will get to the resolution. I will touch on the highlights of the land purchase contract. The certain parcels of real estate property located in Fair Hope, which are more particularly identified as the parcel number, council, you can read that long number, is commonly known as the K-1 Center. The tax parcel number, you can read that number, commonly known as the K-1 Playground. And the tax parcel number referenced in the purchase contract, commonly known as the Nick Center. So, we would gain possession of all three of those properties. The purchase amount is $4 million. Two and a half millions, two and a half million dollars would be due upon closing and $3 million, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one and a half million dollars would be due in five annual installments of $300,000 through the Educational Advisory Committee, something that we are funding now. And it would be taken into consideration, you know, their recommendations, it would go back to the Fair Hope feeder pattern. So, if we continue the same course, I don't see that as really an added expense and something that we're doing already. We would like to close owner before December 31st. There's some environmental remediation that's included in this and we have a $50,000 deductible that the city would pitch in to mitigate some environmental contamination that may or may not exist, where some fuel tanks existed, they are still underground, where a bus barn used to be on the property. There, council, if you look at Section 13, Part D, under legal fees, that was supposed to be stricken from the agreement. So, if you've looked this over, thanks to our city attorney for catching that just before the meeting, that should be stricken. There is a reversion clause on the conveyance that could revert back to the seller if the property is no longer used for public purpose for a duration which shall be 15 years from the date of closing. I think that goes a long way towards protecting the property for public use only. There was, there was actually originally, council, the clause was indefinite and I thought that that would not be wise for the city. We don't, we can't predict the future, but I thought that the 15 years that we negotiated was a very reasonable term. Mr. McDowell, any legalese that you want to point out in there? Council, any questions? Also, I really want to thank Councilman Jimmy Conyers, who assisted me many, many times in this endeavor and also Councilman Robinson, who, as an attorney, looked this over pretty thoroughly. City Attorney Marcus McDowell, for your efforts. I want to thank Lee Lawson for bringing the Hatch grant opportunity to the forefront. Keep in mind of this $2.5 million, if we win this grant, we're only paying $500,000. We're only paying one-fifth of that. I mean, it's a heck of a deal, people. It's a heck of a deal. And then, if we don't receive the grant, we still have the opportunity to back out of this. I mean, it's a no-brainer, in my personal opinion. I want to thank Baldwin County Board of Education for their willingness to negotiate with the city of Fair Hope. They've been very instrumental. Things got off a little slow. The negotiation got, they got off to a slow start because there were questions about title and deeds. This property goes back to the early 1900s and there's just a lot of, a lot of attorneys that had to pay attention to this before we were able to purchase it. So, I'll be quiet now and I will read the resolution. It says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fair Hope, Alabama, that Council President Jack Burrell, on behalf of the city of Fair Hope, is hereby authorized to execute a real estate purchase agreement for properties owned by the Baldwin County Board of Education adopted this 5th day of September 2018." And you do have the land purchase contract in your hands, council. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you, council.